Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education. It is Monday, July 15th. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend Matthias, can we please take the roll?
Welcome, everyone. Ms. Davis.
Here.
Dr. Flores.
Present.
Ms. Lewis.
Present.
Reverend Matthias is present. Mr. Ross.
He's excused.
Excused.
Ms. Shaki.
Present.
Ms. Williams.
Present.
Dr. Baker.
Here.
President Grant.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Next door, I have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Okay. We do not have any celebrations today. Do we have public comment for board agenda items?
We do not at this time.
Secretaries report.
All right. We have one. Board committee meeting scheduled for the academic committee meeting is scheduled for August 1st at 4:30 at the board chambers here in this location. So August 1st at 4:30, Academic Achievement Committee.
All right, and then we have one committee chair update. Ms. Shaki for the Legislative Committee?
Yes, the Legislative Committee met on June 27. And we started with just a brief conversation with Rusty Merchant and Chris Glass on their recent presentation on the Michigan School Finance Collaborative with superintendents and legislators from across the state. They spoke to them about the student achievement results and the financial realities of school districts right now. We know with, as freshmen, a legislature, as we have, these relationships and meetings are incredibly important. So I was so glad to hear that we are really informing and building those relationships with our legislatures. And we also talked about third grade reading legislation and learned that it's the next spring 2020 test scores that will determine whether or not a student is retained. We also learned that it's not just whether or not a student, or I learned, whether or not a student is at reading level, but rather there is a lower cut score. And so it's not just if a student's reading at their current grade level, it's actually a lower score that will be whether or not they're retained. So we'll be watching this closely as I know there's going to be a tremendous amount of discussion over the next year as that law is pending. We are waiting on a budget like the rest of the state. So they are out of session right now and we expect that the legislature will probably have a budget the end of July. So they're staying, maybe a little later. We'll see what happens. And we are scheduling another dinner with our local legislatures on September 24. So that's a few months away, but we'll keep reminding you so that we can have the board there for that discussion and to continue to build those relationships.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have the superintendent's report.
Madam President and members of the Board of Education, I would like to ask John Helmuth to come forward. He will provide an update on our summer programming and also he will stay up here for the Promise Zone Authority appointments.
Good evening, Dr. Gorman. Nice to see you in that chair. Madam President, members of the board. Madam President. Do you want me to continue?
Apologize.
All right, good evening. So first and foremost, just we are coming to the conclusion of our summer school activities. We've had a rigorous summer school. We actually operate nine different programs, including our largest program, which is the Summer of Success. They had more than 1,500 students engaged in summer school. Elementary, the strong focus was on that reading, on second grade reading in particular. Four hours of daily instruction to really help to target those students, get them kind of over that hump and get them ready for start of school this year and to have them on track to be successful and be proficient on that third grade reading exam that they'll take for the first time for the M-step. Middle school focuses on ELA math and social emotional learning. And then high school is largely credit recovery. And we want to extend an invitation. There is going to be a graduation ceremony. We have 13 seniors who are able to persist throughout the summer and to earn their high school diplomas. That ceremony is going to be this Thursday, July 18th at 11:00 a.m. at the University Prep Academy. And to just give you a high-level overview, and I don't have all the details on the numbers with me, but the English Language Summer School, Sound Reading Program, that's the Kennedy School Reading Program in the summer, Early Childhood Newcomers Summer School, the Extended Year Program, Loop Kids Read Now and Grasp are all examples of summer programs, quite a few of which are focused in on literacy. And we're just really excited that students were able to persist and that we had so many kids go through summer school this year. And that's all I have.
John, we'll call you back a little later.
You're gonna call me back?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Under action items, we have the purchasing agenda. Did anyone have any questions or anything that they would like to discuss? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the purchasing agenda?
So moved.
Support. Reverend Matthias?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matthias, yes. Mr. Ross is excused. Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
And I did want to make one note on that purchasing agenda. I apologize, I didn't make it earlier. But under the Bond Projects, Item C, number four, for the renovation of Union High School, the construction company is not Earhart, it is Owen Ames Kimball. So that is just the note that there was an error in the company and it'll be updated. Next, we have the Purchasing Agenda Addendum. Are there any questions or discussion around that? All right, do I have a motion to approve the Purchasing Agenda Addendum?
So moved.
Support.
Okay. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matthias, yes. Mr. Ross is excused. Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Next, we have the MCACA grant application for Grand Rapids University Preparatory Academy. Dr. Gorman is going to give us some background on that.
Yes, this is a grant application to provide programming for the students at U-Prep, which will take place at WIMCAT. The amount is $18,000, which is much lower than the required $100,000 amount that you're accustomed to seeing. But one of the requirements of the application is board approval. So although it's considerably less than what you're used to seeing at this table, the application mandates board approval. So that's why you're seeing that today.
Do I have a motion to approve the MCACA grant application?
So moved.
Support.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matthias, yes. Mr. Ross is excused. Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
And finally, we have the 2019 and 2020 Michigan High School Athletic Association Membership Resolution. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matthias, yes. Mr. Ross is excused. Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Grouping?
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda Grouping?
Support.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matthias, yes. Mr. Ross is excused. Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
All right, and so the Promise Zone Authority was moved to a discussion item for this evening. And the reason for that is that I wanted to make sure that all of our colleagues had a full understanding of what is the Promise Zone? What are our goals for the Promise Zone? How does it function? How does it benefit the students in our district? And we haven't had a chance to have that discussion since the new members have been on the board and I think also since some of the final details have been set in place. So I wanted to take some time to have that discussion without a vote on the table tonight. So we will have Mr. Helmuth, who will come and provide some of that information and details for us and we can feel free to ask questions.
Good evening again. So thank you for the opportunity. This is, it's a refresher for some of you and it's new for a couple as well. And I think as we looked back at the history, it's been a few years since this opportunity first came before us. So it's a really good opportunity for us to share this, for you to ask questions, get that information, because this is a tremendous opportunity that 15 other locations across the state or 14 others have taken advantage of. And so let me just start a little bit on the original Promise Zone legislation was passed in 2009 and that created up to 10 Promise Zones. This came on the heels of the Kalamazoo Promise. And you might recall, the Kalamazoo Promise is not an actual Promise Zone and theirs is unique in that they had philanthropists that stepped up and created a massive foundation. And that is in fact targeted at Kalamazoo Public students. As the legislature and the governor's office looked at how can we kind of create seed startups? How can we create these opportunities in other predominantly high-poverty neighbors and cities throughout the state? That led to the creation of Promise Zones. And this is for Michigan school districts, ISDs, cities, townships and counties that can apply and they have to have an above-average poverty rate for families and children. Then following the legislation of 2009, there was a push in November of 2017 to expand it from 10 to 15 Promise Zones. At that time, there were four Promise Zones under the original applicants from 2009 who were already in line. So they, and it's first come, first served. So there, in theory, there was only one new slot. Well, we, some of you might remember, we were in a scramble because there's requirements that you have to post X number of ads a couple days, or 20 days in advance of a public hearing. And we were in the hunt with Mason County. Unfortunately, they got a little leg in front of us. And so despite all the efforts that we did with the board here, we were kind of second in line. And then in January of 2018, the board, you did adopt a resolution to initiate that application process. So that at least put us in line. And then we were in communication with the Michigan Department of Treasury to say, well, what about, are the other four actually using this? And in fact, the vast majority didn't even know they were on the waiting list. And so the Treasury put a letter out that said, you need to respond within a certain number of days. And thankfully, as a result of that, that created a new opportunity for us. And then in July of 2018, the Michigan Department of Treasury informed the district that we were officially granted a Promise Zone designation. And then on September 17th, 2018, this board officially approved that designation, which then kind of set everything in motion. The state law provides for up to five years for us to implement or to submit for implementation Promise Zone Development Plan. I'm gonna talk more about that in just a minute. But Grand Rapids is now one of 15 across the state. A few of them have kind of gone a little defunct, so it may not be a full 15. But it's Baldwin, Battle Creek, Bent Harbor, Covert, which is one of the non-functionings. Detroit, which is, was actually formed by the city of Detroit, not by the public school district. Flint, which is not a formal authority, at least not yet, but they are providing scholarships in a similar fashion. Obviously, Grand Rapids, Hazel Park, Lansing, Mason County. And that is one of the, that is the only county-formed Promise Zone. The Muskegon ISD, the Nuago Risa, which is their version of an ISD. Pontiac, River Rouge, that's another city formed that is not currently functioning. Saginaw and, as I said earlier, Kalamazoo was actually not a Promise Zone. They did not designate it that way. So the first step in that process is to appoint the 11-member Promise Zone Authority. Two of those designees, one is for the Speaker of the House. The Speaker has chosen to appoint J.C. Hizinga of National Heritage Academies. And the Senate Majority Leader has appointed Teresa Weatherall Neal. And so those two have already been selected and are in writing. The remaining nine go to the CEO of the eligible entity, AKA the superintendent. And so, and I'm gonna talk more a little bit about the rationale and kind of what into that here in just a minute. But let me continue to kind of paint the picture of what goes in, what's in the state law, what this Promise Zone Authority is going to have to do in order to complete this development plan for submission to the Department of Treasury for their sign-off. The, yeah, once the authority is appointed, the first task is creating the Promise Zone Development Plan. This will provide all the specific parameters on the extent of the financial promise. A Promise Zone Development Plan includes, but is not limited to, a complete description of the proposed promise of financial assistance. So at minimum, it has to be the promise of, or at minimum, equal to the qualified educational expenses to obtain an associate degree. Qualified educational expenses include tuition, fees, expenses for fees, books, supplies and equipment for the course of instruction. And so it's an associate degree, but that, at minimum. But it may also provide funding for eligible students to attend private or public schools not to exceed the average amount of a bachelor's degree at a public institution. So the highest they could do is essentially a bachelor's degree and any related costs. That, the promise, notable that this promise must be for both public and private students that are within the designated area. And I'll go through some of the criteria in just a minute here. But there was a lot of question, there was even some Facebook chatter that was questioning, well, why are charters included? Why is the Catholic schools? Well, because the law requires it. And something that, this is an opportunity not only for GRPS, but it's an opportunity to support the academic progress and success of children throughout the entire city of Grand Rapids. And I'll also talk a little bit more about what I think are those pros and cons and the benefits of this in a minute. The Promise Zone Authority Development Plan also must specifically name which higher education institutions as well as which trade, skilled trade opportunities there, because this also applies to skilled trade post-secondary. Most PZAs start with a Promise Zone minimum of an associate's degree at the local community college. That is in fact, one of the consultants, a gentleman named Chuck Wilber, who's with Public Policy Associates. He has, he was instrumental in the formation of the state law. He is an advisor assigned to us through the Michigan Promise Zone Association. Yes, there is an association for everything. And he's already advocating that we start small and eventually you can add on as you raise more money or that you get more of the state tax capture, which I'm also gonna talk about in a minute. So a complete description of any limitations on the promise of financial assistance must be included in this development plan. So that includes prorated, whether the scholarship is gonna be prorated based on the years the individual resided in the zone. So you may have families that just moved here and the Promise Zone Authority Board is gonna determine, are they eligible for a full Promise Scholarship? Or do we prorate it based on how long they've been in the zone? So if someone's been with us from kindergarten on, you know, do we want, does this board want to give them more money than those who may have just moved here? Now, there's restricting, that there's a restriction on the minimum number of years that an individual is residing in the zone, very similar to the previous one. That another potential limitation is maintaining a minimum college GPA and a minimum college credit hour class load. So the idea behind that is also starting to look at the progress, success and continued completion of courses while they're being funded by the scholarship at whichever higher education institution. Restricted to attendance at one or more public or private higher education institutions, the Promise Zone could put on a GPA requirement for high school students graduating. They could have a minimum grade point average. Challenge Scholars does have that as part of their criteria. So, and quite a few of the other authorities typically have about a 2.0 or 2.5. 2.5 is the most common grade point average minimum. Limited to students that comply with requirements to improve student progress. So one of the benefits is the opportunity to invest in essentially those college career readiness staff persons, much like what Challenge Scholars is funding now, those who are the help and support that are in the high schools, helping to get kids on track so that they're eligible to take advantage of this opportunity, that they're filling out the FAFSA forms, they're doing all the steps they need to in order to be eligible to graduate, but then also to take advantage of this scholarship opportunity. This next one is a big one. Is it limited to students that reside within the boundaries? So this is where we, when I start to talk about retention recruitment benefits, is right now, we have a whole lot of kids that are choiced in to Grand Rapids from outside the city. And that's not an uncommon. If anything, we've started to see that tick up with some of our portfolio of choices. This board's gonna determine whether or not those kids will be eligible. If they in fact decided that, that's an incentive for someone to, who lives in Kentwood or Wyoming, to send their kids to Grand Rapids Public Schools or one of the charters or that has a high school, there's only one in the city. And then there's, or public or private, Catholic, Christian, and there's a few others that are there. But that gives us some degree of competitive advantage and incentive for individuals, if they're not moving into the city, to at least consider sending their kids to GRPS or one of the other institutions. The last is they are required to exhaust all known restricted grants for education expenses at the federal, state and local level. So essentially, you've gotta, you've gotta do the PEL, you've gotta do, you've gotta fill out your FAFSA, you've gotta exhaust all of those opportunities. So this does serve as a last-dollar scholarship, much like the way the Challenge Scholars does. This implementation plan, we have up to five years to submit this. So we kind of are anticipating it could take a good year or so before they've really developed, because the plan also has to include details for how we're gonna fund it. And I'm gonna talk about that right now. So while we have those five years included in that plan is we must raise the local funds for the scholarships for year one and year two. And I know Mr. Oberst is still kind of crunching those numbers. But if the students were going to GRCC from GRPS, we're talking about a million or so the first year and maybe 2 million the second year. I've seen numbers range from 694 in year one to 1.5. And so they're gonna get those numbers crunched. They're gonna use the actuarial tables. They're gonna work with the higher ed institutions to see how many students are coming from West Catholic, Catholic Central, Christian, GRPS and others. The other part of this is, so there is the local fundraising aspect that we would have to put together a development plan for how we're gonna raise those local funds. That must be included in this development plan that would be signed off on by Treasury before the tax capture kicks in. So year three is when we would be eligible to use the state tax capture. What that is, is the, it's half of the incremental growth in the state education tax capture. So everyone, we pay a 6% state education tax. When property, when values are going up, that increase in those incremental values, we're gonna get that capture. We're gonna get half of that incremental growth. And I, you know, I've heard figures approximately 1.5 million in year one. And that is based on the initial tax capture base year, which would be the, basically the year before we start paying out scholarships. And that's good for us, because right now, the projected growth is pretty significant. So we could anticipate seeing a fair amount of money that would be in just from the state tax capture. However, it will likely still not be enough to cover the full expense, especially if they go, if the board decides to go to a four-year instead of just a two-year associate. Or if they, instead of doing a two-year associate, it's two-year associate and the equivalent thereof that would follow a student to another public or private institution of higher ed in the state of Michigan. So all of this, these numbers will be crunched. These are open meetings. They're subject to FOIA. I mean, it's, in fact, this would likely be the location. And all of that has to be determined by the Promise Zone Authority. So I'm gonna stop there for a quick second. Are there any questions on kind of the law and kind of how, what the Promise Zone Authority expectations are, their roles and responsibilities? Anything specific before I move on to kind of our rationale on the appointments?
Mr. Helmuth, when you were talking about this board, you mean the board that is to be?
Correct. Yes, sorry. The Promise Zone Authority Board, which the law is very clear that the CEO of the eligible institution, with the advising consent of the board, will issue those appointments. But you all have to formally vote to accept those appointments. Once that's done, we would then call the first meeting. There's an, it'd be an organizational meeting where they have to take the oath of office. They have to elect a chair. It doesn't actually specify vice chair or treasurer or secretary, but in likelihood, we'd include officers. And then they just have to begin getting organized. We have not determined what that would look like, but most of the other authorities meet either quarterly or maybe it's once a month for the first couple, first six months, first year, until they can get the development plan implemented or written, submitted to Treasury in advance of a formal submission. Treasury has said, hey, don't just send it. Give us a chance to look at it first and then we will give you feedback. You go back, tweak it and then submit it. And then they have up to 60 days to approve it. And if they don't approve it in 60 days, it's automatically approved.
All right, now, when you talk about this board, are those the people like somebody from the Catholic schools? The board has been established, really?
Well, I'm gonna talk about that in a minute. The board has not been established. We have what was brought to you in June at your work session were superintendent, former superintendent Weatherall Neal's recommendations. And I'm gonna go through kind of each of those and just give you kind of some of the rationale. And then we'll take continued questions and feedback and discussion. And then I think the intent is for us to kind of re-huddle and for Dr. Gorman to take that information into account and then come back to you at your next regularly scheduled board meeting with recommendations.
Question. You mentioned a CEO. Is that a paid position?
It is not. So the CEO, sorry, I'm using the jargon from the state law. The CEO of the eligible entity. So in this case, we're a school district applying as we're an eligible entity. The CEO of a school district is the superintendent of schools. So, well, Dr. Gorman is paid as superintendent. As a potential member of the Promise Zone Authority Board, there is no compensation for board members. However, the Promise Zone Authority does have the power to hire either individuals, like their own CEO, to run this operation and/or consulting firms or hiring another nonprofit or another foundation that could do it. So this is a pretty massive operation and how, how all of these scholarships will get divvied out, how they're gonna be tracked, how the accountability, the measurement and all of that is gonna be quite an undertaking. So there will likely need to be investment in some way, shape or form in staff, consultants or some organizations to help run this.
And then I didn't wanna get too into whatever the weeds or the grass, but in terms of kind of a guidance counselor or a scholarship, whatever, what thoughts are in that? Because right now, we have guidance counselors.
So that is an eligible expense. If the Promise Zone Authority Board said, we want to invest in student support services, counselors, college career readiness, youth advocates, those are, those are expenses that would be eligible for use of Promise Zone Authority dollars. The one that's probably most notable that's doing that where, what is the name of that? Hazel Park has established themselves and they're, Hazel Park has established themselves and they're calling it a citywide initiative. They want to be a college-ready town. And that's kind of like their messaging, that's their marketing, that's their slogan. And so, I think that's another aspect of this will be to consider, you know, how does Grand Rapids brand and market this? What do we use, how do we use this to retain and attract students, talent, job providers? Because beyond the immediate benefit for education purposes and for helping to create that college-ready cohort of students, it also has an economic development benefit. It's, it will be an attractive thing for the city of Grand Rapids. Grand Rapids is already hot, has lots of reasons to be here. This is yet another reason to kind of live, work, and play in the city. It certainly will have its tension points because as it makes Grand Rapids more attractive, you have those issues of affordable housing, gentrification, some of those dynamics there that are already in play now that this certainly wouldn't dissuade in any way.
I have a question with regards to how the public can provide feedback to this particular board. You said there are open meetings. Will they have an opportunity to bring questions or concerns before that board, the public?
Yep, absolutely. It's subject to Open Meetings Act where there are public notice requirements and there are public comment requirements on agenda and non-agenda items.
A quick question regarding criteria is, can financial need be a criteria?
It's not listed in the state law. That's something I would want to run by the consultant because it does, there is some open-ended language that says it's, you know, should be considered but is not limited to. So, they've used that language in the state law. So, I think there may be some consideration given to that. The only currently listed is that they have to exhaust all federal, state, and local.
Mr. Hummel, just a clarifying question about the tax capture. So, after year three, should, God forbid, property values decrease, then the authority is responsible to bear the cost of the full scholarship?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have my buzzer on, I really do.
Somebody has a question.
Any other questions before Mr. Hummel proceeds?
I'm just wondering, how long do you think this will take? I mean, like, when do you think our kids, kids who are going into 10th, 9th?
Sure. We had a meeting today with Chuck Wilbur and our friends at Canary Consulting, Josh Spencer, who worked with us on our capital campaign and has really worked closely with the district and other entities on similar type initiatives. We were looking at, probably the most feasible would be for the graduates of 2021. Anything's possible to do it sooner than that. Certainly, another dynamic in all that is you have the Challenge Scholars having their first graduating class coming up too. And that's going to be something that this, we're going to have to work with our friends at the Community Foundation, Diana Seeger, Chris Cuttsley, their capital campaign members that had originally raised $30 million for Challenge Scholars and are on the brink of raising a similar amount. What does this mean for that? How do we, how do the two work together? And that's going to be complex. So, that alone might take more time.
So, my question, speaking of the Challenge Scholars, can you share any information that you have as to why this Promise Zone would be a better option versus us trying to expand the Challenge Scholars? And then, lastly, with regards to the PZA, have they shared any information as to why some of the other entities are not thriving so that as new people come onboard, they can kind of learn from those issues?
Yeah, absolutely. So, let me start with the second one. So, for why the PZA, some of them have not succeeded. You might recall when the initial state law was passed was in 2009, right in the middle of the recession. And so, I think you had communities that didn't have a big property tax base that saw significant property tax loss and lack of the philanthropic support. And so, it's a combination of things, but in essence, it's a combination of leadership changes, decreased property values, lack of ability to raise the funds locally. And I think those were kind of the main things. What was your first question, Kim? Sorry.
Regards to why this is a better option versus...
Oh, right. So, why this is better than trying to expand the Challenge Scholars? And certainly, Challenge Scholars is exclusive to GRPS students. And so, there is a huge benefit to Challenge Scholars. Right now, though, it's limited to just those that are essentially in two tracks at Union High School. You have, the initial Challenge Scholars was all sixth graders, starting Westwood and Harrison. If they persist to graduate from Union, meeting certain criteria, a four-year tuition is paid for. Okay, that's huge, and it's also expensive. Second option for those students that come into Union at ninth grade but were not part of that initial Harrison-Westwood track, they would be eligible, if they graduate in four years, meet same criteria, their associate degree at GRCC would be paid for. Far less expensive, but still, it's a big school, it's got 1,200 kids, it's our largest graduating class or one of our largest graduating classes. And so, that was $30 million as part of phase one of the fundraising. I believe the original intent was for phase two to be 30 million, but it may be a little bit less than that. That's to create the endowment to just fund Union. So, we have seven high schools. And so, you could take that dollar amount, it may be a little bit less, it may be half of it even, but if you multiply by six, you can see how much money. Now, you're getting in the hundreds of millions of dollars to raise philanthropically. And it's not, we are a very philanthropic community. Kalamazoo has demonstrated, they have those philanthropists and a couple billionaires who stepped up. So, it's feasible, but that is the biggest, is the fundraising. The difference with the Promise Zone is you get the state tax capture. And that's, that, you know, it'll grow exponentially because the base value starts the year before the first promise. And so, if we start, let's say, this next school year, everything going forward, based on the incremental property tax growth, that half of which we'll capture, that's going, should incrementally grow as long as our property values continue to grow. And certainly, we were the strongest city to weather through the one-state recession. And the growth in our property values and the rates are really strong right now. So, we anticipate a pretty strong rate of return, certainly in the first few years. It may plane off a little bit if there's an economic recession. But again, the trajectory of Grand Rapids is such that we anticipate that growth going for years on end. And so, that's anywhere from 1.5 to however many millions of dollars just in the state tax capture annually to fund these scholarships and to fund any related activities for the student support systems that would be in the schools.
So, the funds that we would raise and or capture from the taxes, those are dollars spent, not dollars into an endowment?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. We need to make a big, yeah, it'd be a very large endowment, especially if they tried to go more than the two-year associate.
Sustainability is really based on that tax capture because we can't guess how people will donate.
In theory, because it also, if we did the state minimum where it's guarantee of an associate degree, A, that assumes those students, whether they are students or they're at the private schools, are going to go to CC. And so, this is, the state tax capture, if they do the bare minimum, is going to cover a pretty significant portion. It's when they start to expand it, maybe look at other higher ed institutions that are four years, and this would maybe cover some of those college credits, then you're spreading it out beyond a community college. And so, that's, that's the job of the Promise Zone Authority is to unpack this, what makes the most sense, what's the most sustainable and feasible? That's why most of them start with an associate degree to start, and then from there, they kind of begin to layer on.
What's the reaction of the private schools and charter schools?
Enthusiastic. In fact, the, the Christian, the Catholic, and NHA, like within 24 hours of when the first M-Life story broke, they called and said, hey, is this something that we'd be eligible for? And I said, well, by law, you're required to be. And so, that was kind of that preliminary interest, and that's a good segue into kind of the rationale for who Superintendent Weatherall Neal and ultimately, Dr. Gorman have, are considering for those appointments for you to vote on here before too long. Okay, so, I'm going to move into the rationale, that's a good segue. So, there are several kind of key factors in kind of how to make the decision for who to recommend for appointment. And first factor was public and non-public, is that the Christian schools, the Catholic schools, who we have very strong relationships with, we do a lot of shared time, their student body will benefit, they also are used to doing capital campaigns and other types of sustainable fundraising. And so, the benefit was those, their students will directly benefit, just like ours will. And that they also bring a fundraising prowess to the table as well. So, that's why Tom DeYoung, who's the superintendent of the Christian schools, and David Faber from the Catholic schools were recommended. That's also why the Speaker of the House, fundamentally, that's one of the reasons why he chose J.C. Heisenberg from National Heritage Academies because there is one NHA high school that's in the city that would benefit. Second major factor was Challenge Scholars. I mentioned that earlier, I mentioned the dollar amounts that they've already raised. And that's why when we look at this, Diana Seeger, who's the president and CEO of the Community Foundation, and then Kate Pew Walters, who is a Ottawa Hills graduate and a major donor, most recently to, a million-dollar donor to our capital campaign for GRPS Capital Campaign, and she co-chaired the original Challenge Scholars campaign. So, she's a friend, an advocate of GRPS, proven fundraiser. The, we're going to have to figure out how this works with Challenge Scholars, and that alone is going to be a heavy lift that we need to look at. Next big point was fundraising, and I think I kind of touched on that already. It's not to say that every one of those who may be recommended can't help raise monies, but there are a few that have history of raising multi, with multimillion-dollar campaigns. And at minimum, we know we've got to raise a couple million for year one and year two. Second to the last reason was the city of Grand Rapids and their economic development. This is one where very commonly, the mayor and the city manager, or the county administrator, the county chair, they have a vested interest in the success of the Promise Zone Authority. And so, both Mayor Bliss, as well as city manager Mark Washington, are names that were recommended, that they, they have fundraising skills, they both have touched, and through our city, our community's children, our joint initiative, we do a lot of work, obviously the to-college-through-college has been part of that. So, that has already been a priority for the mayor and for this, our friends at City Hall. This is a chance to potentially pour fuel on that and really help to get kids to college and through college. Not lastly, second, next was an eye toward diversity. We wanted to make sure that it was a diverse board that's reflective of the community. We have Omar Cuevas, who's with the city of, who's with the Chamber of Commerce, he's also a parent and a strong advocate for Grand Rapids Public Schools. And obviously, the Chamber of Commerce also has an interest in the economic development benefits of this Promise Zone. And then, lastly, and kind of most importantly for us, is that GRPS, we'd like to see as a priority interest. And, well, all the stakeholders who would benefit, not all, but the big stakeholders from the non-public and the charter, they're included. You'll see the Grand Rapids Public School advocates really take the majority of the appointments. And that for, makes a lot of sense because I think like you, like we've heard from others on social media and friends, just that they, they want GRPS to be at the center of attention. We're going to make sure that happens, and we think with these appointments that that would occur.
John, I know that there have been questions about an appointment from higher education. Do you mind addressing?
Yeah, absolutely. And I want you to emphasize that this was, so in addition to these 11, or really the nine, but I'll say the 11, there were 17 other individuals that were on the list that we went through. And that's where what Teresa was advocating for was essentially a Promise Zone Commission. This would like, this would be an entity, or this would be a committee that would have to be appointed by the actual advisory board. And this could serve like a fundraising committee. It's no different than you have your board of directors, and then you have your capital campaign committee that's going to help raise the funds. That includes every higher education representative, every foundation, major employers who would have a vested interest in this. And then, really, the main reason we were advocating that they not be on the Promise Zone Authority Board is there would be a direct conflict of interest. That they, Bill Pink was, because GRCC is likely to be the first, if not one of the greatest beneficiaries, he would have to recuse himself on virtually every vote because of the direct vested financial stake. And that would be true for Ferris, it'd be true for Kendall, it'd be true for Davenport, GVSU, go down that list. And so, we think a more appropriate place for it, to ensure there's adequate representation from higher ed, would be on this finance committee, this advisory committee, the commission, whatever they choose to call it.
With regards to those board members, are there term limits or a number of years they'll serve? Can you share with us?
Sure. So, the way, there are not term limits, however, that's correct, right? Okay. There are. Okay. Josh, would you answer that for me? Sure, come on up. Sorry, I, I thought I knew everything.
There are actually four-year term limits, however, in the first, the first cohort of board members, the terms are staggered evenly with members taking one, two, three, and four-year terms. So, every year except for one, you'd have two, and then one year, you'd have three members coming up. And then, that board is charged with naming the new board members.
That's right, that's right. But there is not an actual limit on the number of years.
Yeah, the year, I'm sorry, yeah, you're right.
That's right.
You were right.
No, no, so, the way that works, just to reiterate, like, you have, we have to do staggering terms for this initial appointment that you approve. Once they're appointed, though, it'll then be the Promise Zone Authority's board to fulfill those appointments moving forward. And there is no limit as to how long an individual can serve on there.
So, with that is, so Rosalynn Bliss is on this as mayor. If she no longer is mayor, of course, this would happen much later, but is her seat as the mayor's seat, or is it as Rosalynn Bliss's seat?
Rosalynn Bliss.
Okay, so...
So, the...
So presumably, if the mayor, or the city manager, or for that matter, the CEO of Catholic schools moves on, it would be, someone would have a conversation about stepping down and appointing their replacement.
Because I think that's part of, I mean, I would argue that in some ways, if this, these appointments, if you agree with these appointments, that you're kind of giving legislative intent. I mean, you're kind of saying, we think that we should have, so if Faber, you know, retired, then the Catholic schools may want to put someone new in that position. Now, that, but that would be up to the Promise Zone Authority Board, not up to this school board.
And lastly, of those names you mentioned, given the county stake, was there a representation, representation from the county?
You know, that's a great question. So, Wayman Britt, his name was listed on kind of our list of prospects, but I think that's, that is something, the county has a vested interest in this. We have lots of friends on the county who would make, make a lot of sense to be part of this. And so, I think that's something that, whether it's on the authority or it's even on the commission, because I think we had put him, recommended for the commission, just so we had enough seats for several of these other stakeholders.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much for that, we appreciate it.
Very thorough, thanks.
Thank you.
Very exciting.
So, I just wanted to make sure that we all had a deep understanding of the work on every level and that things will still be growing and evolving, so we can expect still updates, you know, of course, we'll take a vote, and then there will be updates coming from that authority as well as things progress. Do we have public comment for non-agenda items?
We do not.
All right. Superintendent's comments?
No comment.
Dr. Flores?
No comment.
Dr. Baker?
No comment, thanks, it's welcome. First meeting, Superintendent Gorman.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis?
No comment.
Ms. Shaki?
Welcome, Dr. Gorman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend Mathias?
Yeah, welcome, Dr. Gorman, and it's exciting to see that summer school progressed, and that we have a graduating class of kids who, for whatever reason, but I'm sure their parents are excited to see them finish, so that's great.
Ms. Williams?
Just would like to welcome Dr. Gorman.
Well, I want to welcome Dr. Gorman, but I also want to say how great it is to be back here to see all my friends from Grand Rapids Public Schools. I haven't seen you for a month, so, and today, my daughter told me that she received a letter from Grand Rapids Public Schools talking about open houses for my granddaughter, so we're back in swing again, so that makes me happy.
All right, well, welcome, Dr. Gorman, and the meeting is adjourned.